Good evening and welcome to the Milford School Committee meeting of March second. Tonight's meeting is being broadcast by Milford TV. There are members of the media in attendance. If anybody would like a copy of tonight's meeting, please let any member know. And again, good evening. First agenda item is the approval of the minutes. Has every member had an opportunity to read the minutes? Could I have a motion from Scott?
Nope.
Oh, that's right, you weren't here, I'm sorry.
I am doing it, yep.
Motion from Jim, second by Joe, all in favor. In unanimous.
Nope, one rescension.
One rescension, yeah.
One extension.
Next agenda item is announcements, correspondence, and distributions. Does anybody have any announcements, correspondence, and distributions?
Mr. Chairman, I've actually three items this evening. Um, first one who, and I hope I'm not stealing your thunder, uh, from the cheerl- I want to recognize the Milford High School cheerleaders. Um, they actually had an opportunity, they competed in the league championship this past Sunday. And they did an amazing job as they always do, certainly making us proud and actually took first place overall and are now the Hawk-Mock League champions. Um, they'll be competing this coming Sunday at actually Whitman Handsome High School, um, in the regi- in the regional championships. So, um, they did an amazing job and I can tell you just, I had an opportunity to go and watch, uh, this past Sunday and I'll tell you, you know, just watching it and not knowing anything about how to judge any of this stuff, just watching the competition. Every team really competed very well, the sportsmanship as always was amazing, but, um, it is a different level when Milford High School cheerleaders step up. It's, there's no question, there were nothing about anything they officially go, well, we had to have won that, right? Like, they, there was nothing they didn't do perfectly, it was amazing. So, um, certainly congratulations to the girls, the parents, um, and to all the athletes and certainly to Coach Heather. And congra- and good luck for this coming Sunday. Um, also wanna congratulate the Milford High School basketball team.
Yeah.
Uh, what a thriller, uh, winning in overtime this past, this past Monday, so congratulations as they continue on.
They're actually playing tonight right now.
Yes, and they're, I know they're playing right now, so certainly good luck to them and, and, uh, I know they've had quite a season, so.
Yep.
Um, and then the last piece, um, just wanted to make sure, maybe this can go into our future agenda items, but I did note that actually was watching this selectmen's meeting this past Monday and was very pleased to see our special athletes being recognized. I was a little surprised that they were being recognized on the selectmen before they, we had an opportunity to do the same thing. I'm hoping that in a future, very near agenda, that they'll be joining us so that we can recognize our special athletes as well.
Okay.
I know we typically do a great job of inviting them in in very timely manner.
Mm-hmm.
I just hopefully that we can get them in so we can recognize them and Jen Walsh and the great work that they all do as well.
Sure.
Thank you.
Any other member? I actually have two. If anybody saw the town cryer, I'd like to send a congratulations to Ryan Gray. He won the division two hundred and ninety-five pound wrestling, great job. And then Nick Antonellis won the state championship for, for swimming. So just another example of the great work that we do here in this district and the Milford Public Schools. And again, I wanna, uh, send a shout out to Coach Seaver and the team that's playing right now in the show, but hopefully you'll make us proud tonight. Good luck to you all. Any other member? Okay. Invitation to speak? Seeing there's nobody here, an invitation to speak. Tonight's high school liaison is Morgan Mickelson. Hello, Morgan.
Hello.
Go ahead.
Um, Milford High School students traveled to Florence, Italy for a two-week exchange program with our Italian sister school, Instituto Duceo Dosto, Salgabini. While abroad, Milford High School students lived with Italian families, attended private Italian language classes, and took in the sights and sounds of Tuscany. Students enjoyed two overnight excursions to Rome and Venice, but all agreed that their best times in Italy were spent getting to know their Italian host student and families who provided them with a unique inside look at Italian culture. Also, in February, a group of students had the opportunity of experiencing the Spanish cultural firsthand. Their group visited Spain as part of our annual exchange program with the Collegio San Agostino that began in two thousand and five. The students had a wonderful time with their host families whom they had met the past September when Spanish students visited Milford. During their stay in Valladolid, the students also visited the nearby cities of Salamanca and Segovia. One of the highlights of the trip was an overnight visit to Toledo and Madrid where they saw many sights and enjoyed a flamenco show. The MHS academic decathlon team has qualified for the state competition which will be held this coming Saturday, March fourth, on the MIT campus. Students have had great success in the first two rounds of competition and so far six students have medaled in science, music, social studies, art, and literature. We have high hopes for the success of the team members this Saturday at MIT. Ms. Erica Rains from the Metro West College Planning Center is working with students on Wednesday mornings, providing information to students regarding the college admission, admission process. Ms. Raze will also be at the Town Library every Friday from four to seven to help seniors and their parents with filling out the FAFSA. Walk-ins are welcome, but appointments may be scheduled by contacting Ms. Raze. A flyer is posted on the high school Twitter account with the contact information. And the high school Twitter account can be viewed on the homepage of the high school website.
Good job, good job.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Nope.
Thank you, good night.
Thank you.
Before we move on, if we could please, uh, as we all know Julian Rizzo passed away.
Yes.
She was the secretary to the directors from the district for nineteen years. My condolences go out, I should say all of our condolences go out to her family. And if we could have a moment of silence, please. Thank you. And again, our condolences to the family. Next agenda item is the spring warrant articles. Craig is gonna speak to those. Um, the Chromebooks and the vending machine, uh, we've already voted on at our last budget meeting. So we won't be voting on those two. Craig?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, the, the PEG access grant does require a vote. Uh, the background information on this article, as a result of the town voting to adopt Mass General Law Chapter forty-four, Section fifty-three, F and three quarters, and the establishment of a PEG access and cable-related fund. The school committee is requesting use of a specified amount via majority vote at the town meeting for the purpose of making improvements in accordance with the terms and agreement of the agreement between the town and the PEG access provider. Uh, the proposal is to see if the town will vote to authorize the expenditure of the available balance in Fund two nine, two six nine six Comcast Verizon PEG access under the jurisdiction of the school committee for purpose of performing upgrades in accordance with the PEG access agreement. And again, that does require a vote, we, we do not have an amount at this point.
Any member have any discussion on it?
Um, I had just a quick question, so.
Sure.
Um, so when, when are we expecting that we'll have the amount on it? I'm just, I, I have no problem certainly taking a vote on it. I, I'm certainly bringing that to our attention, but my concern would be that we're voting for something not knowing the dollar amount that we're putting in.
Um, this, I know that it went through Zach, uh, in the, in the town office and he didn't have an amount on it. Um, and he was, as far as I knew, he was fine with it going like this. Uh, I just, I don't, I'm not sure about the amount, that's all.
John?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, a lot of time warrant articles are put forward without a specific dollar amount and they're revised, um, prior to the meeting or for the night of the evening.
When the dollar amounts are, um, I'm more firm, um, and I maybe I'll have some more to say on. This is about the PEG access. Uh, well, I guess I can say it right now, it, it's similar to the, the Chromebook article. That may be revised in terms of dollar amount, we didn't put a specific dollar amount.
Okay.
And that could be revised. Oh, actually it needs to be, uh, not revised, it needs to be declared before the town meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, and that's why, I, like I said, I just, yeah, I just, I, I, it's, anytime especially when we're going to ask taxpayers for money,
You're okay with it, you're okay with that.
Um, asking for a blank check never sits easy with me.
Understandable.
Um, and that would be my only reservation on voting on something this early.
Okay.
Um, I realize that we need to get it in for the warrant in order to be able to have it discussed at town meeting.
Yep.
Um, as long as we have a dollar amount by then we'll fund it.
Okay.
Yeah, and just, just for clarification if I can, the warrant closes today, so we need to agree that these are gonna be the warrant articles that we're,
Yep.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
We're, you know, s- approving.
Yeah. Motion from John?
A motion, yes.
Second by Scott? All in favor? All right, Kevin, next.
All right, um, the, the final article is, um, has to do with Special Education Reserve Fund. Uh, the background information on that, the passing of an act to modernize municipal finance and government on August ninth of two thousand and sixteen now allows a school district to establish a reserve fund to pay without further appropriation for unanticipated or unbudgeted costs of special education out of district tuition or transportation. Uh, the proposal is to see if the town will vote to establish a special education stabilization fund for the purpose of reserving funds to pay expenses related to special education as authorized by Chapter forty, Section five B of the Mass General Laws, or take any action relative thereto. And there isn't an amount, 'cause it's, we're establishing a, a fund.
Yeah, just, if I can just, just, um, I assume this has already been fully vetted with Zach and the rest of the finance team?
Yes. Mm-hmm. Okay.
Yeah, I mean, this, this sounds like it's really just an accounting measure, um, just to be able to appropriate funds. We know that special education is always such a, uh, a floating target, just for the benefit of the people that are watching at home maybe. Uh, it's such a floating target, it changes such massive amounts year over year.
Hmm.
Um, sometimes it's up, you know, double-digit numbers and it's, it's a, unfortunately, uh, most often unfunded mandates in a lot of cases, so. Um, or underfunded mandates depending on the situation, so. Town has always been very generous, um, and very, been very supportive of our special education programs and certainly the desire to educate Milford children in Milford. Um, so I'm glad that, you know, the state is catching up with some modern accounting terms. So, um, you know, with, with that being said, you know, Mr. Chairman, I'd be pleased to make the motion.
Okay, motion from Scott, second, oh, I'm sorry, Jen?
Uh, yeah, I'm sorry, I just wanted to make a clarification, so when this was vetted, do we have any idea, would this money be coming out of the towns for cash or coming out of stabilization? Do we want to care?
Uh, I don't, I don't know.
Money, okay.
I think this article is just to establish the fund.
The fund.
Yeah.
Any funds transferred to that would have to go through the town meeting approval process.
So.
There's no dollar.
Okay.
Right.
Um, similar to the, the other stabilization accounts.
Right, right. Yeah, it's, it's, so as an example, when we sit down to our budget conversations, right now, it's included in our general fund.
Right, right. Right.
That we can, so the way our, our budgeting is done is, we effectively get a gross dollar amount that ultimately, at the end of the day, we can kinda spend wherever we want.
Right.
Um, what this would do is it would, it would say, when the finance committee comes to us and says, okay, great, here's your operating budget, this really almost creates it as a separate, it's a separate fund
Separate account.
and a separate account that says this money needs to be used for, for special education.
Mm-hmm.
It's, it's basically, it's almost like a special purpose account that's designated versus, and a surplus that goes into there.
A surplus.
So would.
To cover these unanticipated expenses.
So would we ask, so if there were a time when an unanticipated cost arose in the middle of the school year as we would go to the town and say, we need X number of dollars to be transferred into this account for, because it says it's for unanticipated. So, I guess I'm trying to figure out the difference between what we are, what we ask for.
Yeah. Yeah. But. Yeah, it's how we would fund it. Um, I mean, the funding would ultimately come from, y- y- it's gonna be a combination of what we get from the town
Mm-hmm.
through our budget process.
Mm-hmm.
And then the funding would come from, you know, we would, we would have to, you know, ultimately it's, it's under our purview. This is under the direction of the school committee. It's not under the direction of, my understanding of this is it's not under the direction, um, of the general government.
Mm-hmm.
This is at the direction of the town. It's not like a typical, our regular stabilization account has to be funded at town, at town meeting.
Right.
This is a separate account that actually would be Kathy and us as a seven-member board independently elected that would be able to direct how those funds are used and also they'll ultimately how it's funded.
Who would have to fund the stabilization fund?
Okay.
Well, I, I, I think, this is, this is really the first, I'm, this is my really, my first real exposure to this, this article.
Yeah.
Um, for the purpose of tonight, I'm comfortable with voting to sponsor the, the article for the warrant.
Yeah, definitely should have the article.
But we, I, I definitely feel I need more information on, on.
How it's gonna be funded.
The, the funding, the workings, whether this is something that, if we have surplus at the end of the year in our budget, we go to town meeting to, rather than turn it back into the general fund to put it into this, this account, but, um,
Right.
So I think we have a lot of questions, you know, in, in their accounting details really, but, uh.
Right. Yeah, that would be my question, 'cause all the, the stabilization town, fund for the town is funded by money returned to the town by the department heads. And, and my question is how would we, and I'm for having a stabilization fund for it, but how, how is it gonna be funded is gonna be my question.
Right, I think the idea of having an emergency account makes a lot of sense.
Is, is great, great.
Because people move in and things change un- very unexpectedly that we haven't budgeted for.
So.
And I, I think understanding, you know, how, how the funds are expended from that account are important too. I mean, right now, the, the spend for stabilization that goes to town meeting, is that the case on this special ed account?
Yeah.
Or is that under the, uh, the purview of the school committee, but.
It's under the purview of the school committee.
Yeah.
But.
It, so in the past, if somebody's moved in and we haven't been able to cover it, we've had to gone, we've had to go to town meeting and ask for funds to be transferred from one place or another. And I think what this is asked, what this is saying is we're gonna establish our own reserve fund where we don't have to go to town meeting. We have the funds and we can make, if we need the money, we can go in and, and get those resources.
So I, I think most of us probably need to get more up to speed on these, these details, but, uh.
Right.
Yeah, it's gonna work very similar, and I, I have done a little bit of research on this. It's, I, I'd be misleading if I said I, I'm an expert on it, I'm not. Um, I've done a little bit of research on this. It's gonna work very similar, excuse me. It's a stabilization account as opposed to a revolving account, but it would work very similar to the school choice funds where it's an, it's an additional account, um, that's separate from our general operating budget. Our, our school choice money is not part of our general operating budget. It's a, it's an account that's held separately that we can use for offsetting other expenses. And in fact, actually, we've used our stable, we've used those accounts for, um, school choice, for buying technology, buying books, to fill budget gaps, things like this, um, in the past, as Craig had mentioned earlier. This would be, operate similar in that case, whereas it's outside of our general budget and would be used that way. It could be funded with things like, we can take some school choice money and maybe we'll put it in there. We can slide money over from other places, but it's just like the school choice budget. School choice can only be spent through a vote of this board. Town meeting can't spend it, the board of selectmen can't say we'd like it back, the finance committee can't ask for it. It can't be reallocated to go buy a buyer truck. It can't be used for anything, it can only be used for school, for school prop- purposes. It would be the same with this. This is, this is not something the town meeting once funded. Town meeting would not have the authority to spend this. It's only gonna be in the purview of the school committee, just like our general fund is. Um, when our money gets budgeted and it's approved by town meeting and it's moved into our general fund for s- the schools' department's general fund, those funds are now off of, um, the control of any other board. Those funds cannot be spent for anything else. The only ones that have control over the spending of those funds are us.
Okay, so, let's do this, let's take the vote to approve the article and then tomorrow, if she's back, or Monday when Kathy's back, I'll ask Kathy to send all of us, um, a better, you know, understanding of how it's gonna be funded.
Mm-hmm.
All right? All right. Second, I have a motion from Jen, second by Joe Calery, all in favor?
Uh, with, with that, when we get that further explanation from Kathy, my only other ask would be,
Yeah.
um, just for the benefit of the public and transparency, that we also put as much, some clarification and detail, um, out on our website as well.
Okay.
Just one additional, I'm sorry, um, what, I guess the lingering question that I have that this doesn't talk about is, is there, um, something that, up to an amount? So would they say that there would be an amount reserved up to X amount of doll- not to exceed X amount of dollars per year? Also, just so.
I think that's a question Kathy has to make.
Right, right, so that's a question I'd like to have her be able to answer for us.
Okay. 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 So amount, okay.
Right, just to, again, to Scott's point about transparency, so it doesn't look to the community like we're asking for more than.
Okay. Understandable, understandable.
Then, then it seems fair.
Okay. Okay. Next agenda item, report of the Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction Assessment.
Thank you.
Mr. Consiglio.
Thank you. Um, first, Tecapalooza update, uh, hopefully you, you've been hearing it on the radio. Doc Joseph's doing an outstanding job with that. Um, but I just wanna give some background about Tecapalooza and, and of course invite all of you to come Saturday. But, um, so Tecapalooza came really as an idea that came out of the, the Milford Tech Steering Committee, which has about twenty committee, um, twenty teachers and administrators from throughout the district. Uh, Matt Joseph is the, the chair of that, that committee. Um, the event will consist of a welcome breakfast followed by three fifty-minute learning sessions. Each session will have an introductory period and a practice period. And then at the end, there'll be a tech slam to share away takeaways from the day. Um, and the goal is to provide sessions that will offer a variety of experiences and, and tools gathered to all levels and t- of technology learners. Uh, at this point, there's thirty-one different sessions that are being offered and they're all being taught by Milford staff. Uh, I mean, I think that's, if you ask me, that's incredible. We're talking about a Saturday morning and we have thirty-one staff members that are coming in on their own time to present and share different ideas. I think it's awesome. Um, as of eight o'clock this morning, we have a hundred and fourteen people signed up to attend to it, which, again, it's awesome. We're talking about a Saturday morning and, and people are coming in, um, to learn about just different technology tools and, and different strategies. It's, it's great. Uh, we invited any Milford resident that is in the education field to join us. Uh, we also invited some of our collaborative districts to attend. At this point, we have thirteen people from out of the Milford Public School District also attending. Um, the day will be facilitated by Sarah Boyle, Emily Lurie, and Vinnie Alcazarian. Um, obviously, Dr. Joseph would love to be there, but as of seven this morning, he's flying to San Francisco to represent us at a techno- National Technology and Learning Summit. He was one of fifty invited educators, so he actually is gonna, I don't know if I'm spoiling the surprise, but he's gonna beam in from San Francisco, which at eight in the morning, if you're in San Francisco, is four thirty, five, something like that.
Five.
Um, so, it should be a great, great day, so I'm looking forward to it as well. Uh, I don't know if anybody has any questions, but.
What time does it start again?
Starts at eight o'clock. The first session.
Is it at the high school?
Nope, uh, sorry, it's at Woodland, um.
Woodland?
W- obviously, we, all the, all the technology is at Woodland, so we wanted to use the building for that.
Yeah. Okay.
So hopefully you can come.
Great.
Any questions about Tecapalooza? All right. Um, the second thing I wanted to talk about a little bit today was Project Lead the Way. Uh, according to the website, Project Lead the Way's pathways in computer science, engineering, and biomedical science engage students in hands-on activities, projects, and problems. Empower them to solve real-world challenges and inspire them to reimagine how they see themselves. We're looking at this program, Project Lead the Way, to be the curriculum in our STEM classrooms at Woodland and Stacy. Um, if you recall, earlier in the fall, we did have, um, Stacy, the Stacy STEM teachers and, and they were talking about their curriculum. Um, but we're looking at this Project Lead the Way to kinda help them in their curriculum mapping. Um, additionally, we're looking at, at the high school level, there are different high school level courses that Project Lead the Way offers. Um, and we're investigating how we can make those work within our current structure. This program is aligned to next-generation science standards and math standards. Um, we'd like to begin Project Lead the Way at, at Woodland and Stacy next school year and look at the high school within the next couple of years. Um, and I think it's important to note too that with the high school, there are three different tracks that you could offer. Um, there's, like I said, the computer science, the engineering, and the biomedical fields. And if we create those tracks, then students would be able to have transcribed college credit to WPI or institutions like that. Um, obviously, this, uh, well, maybe it's not so obvious, but this, this program is very expensive and we didn't, we didn't put it in our proposed budget. However, we're looking at ways to get it off the ground. And one of the things that we did, uh, Wendy Moreno, Donna Gomes, Corey Howard, uh, Rich Johnson, Dan Nelson, and I collaborated on three different grants to try to make this come to, to Milford and we were accepted to the second phase in two of the programs. That's the launch program and the gateway program, which is the Woodland and the Stacy one. The high school one, we weren't accepted for, but truthfully, when we wrote that grant, we wrote it for two years out anyways. So, we're thinking that's why we didn't get accepted for the second phase. Um, at this point, we have finalized and submitted that, those grants. If we do get it, uh, what it means is we will have all the professional development that we need and that includes a week at WPI for all of our teachers that are, would be teaching it, which is Wendy, um, another teacher at Woodland, and then the two Stacy teachers, they would all spend a week at WPI over the summer. Um, and the other thing is just the startup materials that we would need. Uh, it's up to twenty thousand dollars at the Woodland and up to forty thousand at Stacy, so they're pretty significant grants.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yes.
Um, so Craig, I, um, I, I love the idea of the, the, of the, of the program. Couple of questions.
Yeah.
Um, obviously, you caught my attention anytime you say very expensive.
Mm-hmm.
So I'm glad that we're going through a grant program. Um, are we hiring additional staff for this program?
No.
That'd be my first question. Okay, that's very good news. Um, my concern, anytime we start a program with grant money, if we were to hire, um, is that if for some reason the grant money goes away.
Yeah.
Now we're faced with, we either have to pick up the tab and find another way to spend, we're now sort of taking a finite pie and cutting another slice out of it from a budget perspective, or, you know, we're facing some very difficult challenges. So I'm very pleased to hear that. Is the, is the expectation that the grant will become, um, are these startup costs? Or are these going to be ongoing costs that?
These?
I, what I'm trying to avoid is this, and this is, and I know you already understand it, I wanna make sure I'm making it clear for the, anyb- for the benefit of anybody maybe watching at home is, when we start a program, I'm always, I, I wanna make sure that we have the ability to have it be sustainable.
Yeah.
And if there's ongoing costs that are associated with things, at some point, if that grant goes away, um, I'll use kindergarten, full-time kindergarten as an example. We offset full-time kindergarten with a grant for many years.
Mm-hmm.
Um, that grant went away and we never really accounted for that into our budget. And it was a, it was, there was some sticker shock that occurred to it. It was the right thing to do, I'm glad we did it, but there's some sticker shock that we wanna make sure we build in. And when we start off with, it's very expensive.
Which.
It, it, it causes what little hair I have left on my head to stand on end.
Which is why we're going slow with it.
Good.
Because there, there are different phases of the program and different, um, units that you can get into. We're only trying to do one unit at each level just to see just that, how much it's going to actually cost us, uh, moving forward. The startup costs that we're talking about, like at, at Stacy, the startup costs are, are computers. For one, is a big one. Every, we, we're looking for a set of twenty-five laptops to help run this, and we're also looking for VEX kits, which are robotics kits. Now, we can run it bare bones and have minimal amount of kits, for example. The problem with that is the way that our schedule is set up, kids would have to build something for a l- a short amount of time and then take it apart, and then the next group could do it, build something and take it apart, it's not gonna work. So, we have to see just how it's gonna fit into our schedule and, and who, how we can offer it so that everyone can access it and not blow up our budget, obviously.
Right.
Also.
But these grants have the ability to fund the startup, the grant, the way you want it done, okay.
Yeah, yes. Yeah.
And what is the, do you have an anticipation of what ongoing costs may be for something like this?
Um.
Just so we know what it'd be facing?
I don't. I, I, we're hoping, and I, I say hoping, I, based on what we looked at, that it could fit within what they're already budgeted for. Um, I'm just not a hundred percent sure.
Okay.
So.
Yeah, if we could get some clarity on that as we continue to go forward, that's gonna be important.
Yeah, and, and, and I think we're gonna get that when we, e- even i- if we figure out if we went through the second phase, so.
Okay.
Any other member? Jen?
Yeah, I just wanna say thank you, um, I think that we all felt, clearly it came from the teachers, but I think we felt it too, that there was a need for more. And I think we have such a limited amount of time in our school day, the minutes are so valuable, that we wanna make sure that the kids have the right materials and the right programs, um, to move them forward. So whether it turns out to be this through the grads or something else, I'm grateful that people really stop to take a look at what the curriculum look like,
Yeah.
looks like and, um, that you're finding a way to bring it, bring it up to what our kids really are in need of, so thank you, but.
Any other member? Okay.
All right, um, the next is I wanted to just update, um, a little bit on our math programming. Um, we're continuing to look at just our math program and investigate areas that we can improve. Um, I'd like to highlight just three different areas of exploration and development we've been working on. First is everyday math. Uh, professional development has been ongoing this year. Uh, in next, within the next couple of weeks, I think in, actually in two weeks, we have a consultant that's coming back to our, our district for a week to work with all of the K fi- pre-K to five teachers. She's already worked with them for a week, um, and that's every single pre-K to five teacher that teaches everyday math. Some teachers she's been able to work with more, um, or give them more support for. She, she sees the teacher by grade level or by team level so that she can answer any specific questions that they have, um, at the, at those kinds of meetings. And she provides support for the use of the on- at the, at those kinds of meetings, and she provides support for the use of the online version, too, so that we are using all the tools that everyday math that has. But I think that the best part about the, the way that we structured this professional development is the conversations that come out of it among the teachers, because they're, they're spending an hour and a half to two hours with the consultant, but they're having conversations about best practices and what's working for them and what's working within their own classrooms, and and obviously, they all have similar situations, but this consultant is nationwide, and she's, you know, she's in California, she's, she's everywhere, so she's seen the good, bad, and the ugly of everyday math and can, can kinda give advice uh to our teachers, so our teachers are really enjoying that, really, and learning a lot from it. Uh second, the second thing with math is uh middle school math. Recently, we've been meeting and communicating with staff members, administrators, and parents around our middle school math programming, specifically around algebra. Uh I met with Stacy administration, members of the seventh, eighth, and ninth grade department, special ed teachers, as well as the middle and high school C T Ls. And I get, my goal really was to get a better understanding as to the math programming o- options for middle school students and what it means for them as they move forward throughout their high school career. I got some answers, but I did have a lot of questions still, and there, there's still questions that we're still exploring. First, um we currently have four different levels of math in the eighth grade. That's approximately half of our students are taking high school level algebra, which is great. And that's either an honors level or a college prep level. Uh last year, it was about a third of our students were taking high school level algebra. The other half are taking eighth grade math, um which is a course in itself, eighth grade math, so sometimes we send unintended messages to students where you have this group of kids that are taking algebra, and those, the other kids that aren't taking high school algebra think for some reason they're behind the other students, when in fact, they're not, they're on grade level. So we have to do a little better job at, at explaining that, I think. Some of the questions that we're encountering and trying to address, eighth grade algebra students currently take a midterm and a final just like the high school students do. So with that said, should all eighth grade level students participate in midterms and finals? Are, for some, I don't, do algebra students have better, are they better prepared for high school by already taking those exams? Or are they unnecessary for the eighth grade students? So we're trying to figure that out, that answer out, and what exactly that would look like for eighth grade students, yeah.
If I, if I may, why would you give them a midterm and then end the year final?
The, the eighth grade algebra students are, are do, are taking the high school course, so that's what happens in the high school.
So you line it up just like the high school, okay.
Exactly, and in fact, the, the eighth grade teachers this year brought their exams with them to the, up to the high school, and they reviewed them with the ninth grade teachers, something they hadn't done before, um which I think was, was very interesting to them because it aligns with another question that I had, which was, is the eighth grade algebra course the same as the ninth grade algebra course? And they were finding that in some cases, the eighth graders were performing maybe even a little better than, than the ninth grade students, so they took a lot from those, that time that they had.
Have we realigned, Craig, on that? Cause I, I've, I've received that feedback before.
Yeah.
Whereas it's, sometimes we do, in, in an effort to try and prepare our students for the next level up, so as an example, taking freshman algebra as an eighth grader.
Yeah.
They're not actually taking freshman algebra, in some cases, they're actually taking a harder course than if they just waited the extra year um and did the same thing, so are, are we now seeing that it's, has it been realigned so they're now actually taking the same class? And are they taking this with the same midterm and final?
The teachers say yes, they're taking the same final, they're taking the same midterm, so it appears as if it's aligned.
Okay. You're still reviewing it, sounds like.
I don't know that a hundred percent for sure.
Okay, I was gonna say, your confidence level doesn't.
I, I don't know a hundred percent for sure, but, but
Okay.
when they reviewed their uh, the assessment, they talked about what chapters they were on, and you're right, the eighth grade, the eighth grade students were a little bit ahead of where the ninth grade students were.
Yeah.
Could be for a number of reasons.
Yeah, no, and I'm, I, and I certainly trust the teacher's judgment on that one, but I'm, I'm glad that you're still, you know, trust but verify, that's a good thing.
However, the state is now coming out with um revised standards, and as part of those standards, they didn't have this before, and now they, they, they are coming on where they compact the seventh and eighth grade standards into different courses so that they can account for, um basically, our seventh grade between sixth and eighth, if a kid goes and takes algebra in ninth grade, they're kind of missing a year in there, and we wanna make sure that, that all those standards are covered. So the state is coming out with that new track line for, for all of us, to make sure that we get all those standards covered.
So Craig, if I can, um so the third of the students that took ninth grade algebra last year, what have they taken this year? Are they into algebra two, tenth grade algebra, or are they just not taking?
Geometry.
Okay.
Geo- and some of this, well, some of the students, so most of the students are taking geometry, whether it's, it's um college prep or honors. There are, there is some students that, it's not really a, it's not a huge group of students, but there are some students that, that take the algebra one over again. Cause they didn't do so well in, in, in high school, it's not, it's not a huge percentage of students.
So when we're comparing the eighth graders now to the ninth graders now, the ninth graders aren't including the, you know, maybe the top third math students that, that already took it, so.
Bro, no.
There, there's a, there's a little bit of a factor there.
Yep.
Is there, along those same lines, um what is gauged, what's used from a, from a gauging perspective for sort of choosing where, when they finish algebra one in eighth grade, so the high school level algebra, to where they get placed for geometry? One of the things that, a- and again, I'm, I'm certainly don't hold myself out as an educator, but I know enough about the skills and that are needed. I've seen this happen year in, year out, which is we use algebra results to place a student in a geometry class. And that's an awful lot like using your swim team results to place you on a basketball team. It's not the same skills. They're two completely different forms, it's the one piece of mathematics that's actually very, very different that algebra versus geometry, the way that, in, in the way that they're currently used from a curriculum perspective. There's some similarities, you've gotta have endurance, you've gotta have, you know, using the sports analogies, gotta have endurance, you've gotta have good lung capacity, you gotta be athletic, but they're not, they're not necessarily exactly correlated together, so is it, is, what is sort of that judgment piece?
I think that, I don't know the, all the, the factors that go into it, but it's certainly assessments, and it's certainly teacher, um the teachers are the ones placing it.
Mm-hmm.
Placing the students. But you do need to have a, a firm grasp on algebraic thinking to be able to do geometry, so.
Mm-hmm. Right.
That's basically it, and teacher, teachers are the ones that are placing them.
Okay.
So the, the.
Yeah, I just, I, I've seen student in, I'm sorry, po- Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
I, I've seen student after s- I've seen multiple cases of students that have come in, and it's the, a- and it's interesting to see a, a, a high school transcript. It's um freshman year or eighth grade, algebra A. Junior year, they take, you know, trigonometry or statistics or, you know, pre-calculus. A, calculus, A. Geometry, C. And it's, it's interesting to see, or it literally, it's, it's, i- it's interesting to see sort of the dynamic, I'd be interested to, you know, have you take a little poke at that if you would.
Yeah.
And just wanted to follow up on that, students that actually choose to take algebra one over because they didn't do well enough, or they actu- did they actually fail the course, or they just felt their grade was weak and they wanna take a second shot?
Some cases, some cases.
Okay.
Um, again, if you don't have a firm grasp on all the algebraic concepts and geometry, you're not gonna do so well, and so.
Okay.
So I think, I think, I don't think that when they get a si- w- w- in that case, the teacher and the student and the parent would all come to that conclusion together.
All work together, okay.
Right.
All right, great.
Um, but another question we wanna know is, uh, do all students have the opportunity to take calculus in high school by not taking algebra in the eighth grade? Cause that's kind of a misconception, and it, you do certainly have that ability, you'd have to double up, um algebra geo- or algebra two and geometry or, or somewhere else down the line, you'd have to double up, but you would have that ability. I think that's all the questions we talked about. So, um that was basically where we're at. We do plan on, on meeting again and then having a forum for parents, and I think it, it, it needs to happen, and I think it should be inclusive of, of six through eight middle school parents, and as well as maybe ninth and tenth grade parents, too. Just to, um, just so everyone knows what we're talking about and what tracks people, kids can take. Um, and then finally, with the math, S T math, we is a computer program, Jen Nigerian, Carrie Bannock, um Mary Casello, Christine Oliveri, Fernando Borges, and I met to look at how we could use technology to help our E L students in math, cause language is such a barrier, especially in high school. And how do we, how do we build their foundational math skills when the language part of all the programs that we have, it, it could be a barrier? So we looked at a couple of programs, one of the programs that we looked at in particular was S T math, which involves no language at all, including directions. There, there aren't even any directions on it, you kinda watch. It, it's hard to explain if you haven't seen it, it's basically all these patterns, and you try to figure them out, kinda like a video game. Without any kind of direction at all. And it, it's, it's neat to see the, the correlation between how these patterns work and, and say just a straight word problem. So we looked at that program, but, but we did take a group of educators from here, uh from Woodland Stacy and, and Milford High School, and we visited Bridgewater Rainham, who is using this program, uh pre-K to middle school. They were using it in high school for a little bit, but now it's down in, just in the middle school. And if you look at their results, their elementary schools are showing tremendous growth, and, and they have good, good achievement scores as well. But the reason why we went there is because they also use everyday math, and they also use Glencoe just as we do. And they, they were showing us how you could use those programs with fidelity, but still be able to use this S T math concurrently and, and be able to see just huge results, which was great to see. Unfortunately, this program's also very expensive, um so right now, we're just looking at it. Um.
I get nervous when you say things like that, Craig.
In wishing, in wishing. But we're, we're working with the company to see if, maybe they'll help, they'll pilot it for us with, with our E L students. Uh they also told us about Lawrence High School, who uses it, so we were gonna take a visit over there and see how Lawrence High School uses it.
Okay.
So, great program. And finally, uh long-range ed planning, I, I, we didn't discuss it really at the last meeting, so I wanted to just take a couple of minutes and, and talk about just one of the things that we, we have been talking about. The full committee met two weeks ago, and we discussed essential questions and, and key ideas to support teaching and learning. I reviewed that with, with this full committee about a month ago. So we talked about it at that committee. During the midi, during that meeting, the committee proposed that we look at a consultant to maybe look at consulting firms to help us with our long-range ed plan, and then they also asked that we, we look at the original long-range ed plan, see what that looked like to lead to the new Woodland building. We found in a, we found a long-range ed plan that was written in October of two thousand. We believe that to be the, the original one that led to this, that there was obviously two or three different amendments made to it, but I think that's the one. And that, that plan was based on findings from a N E S D E C study that was conducted in nineteen ninety-seven. That, th- what, what the N E S D E C study outlined was deficiencies within the school building facilities and inefficiencies um in our school programming at that time. So the, that report gave five different options of what we could or should move forward with, and the committee chose, I think, two of those options to move forward with, and went from there. But in any event, that, the name of that study was a long-range s- school facility master plan, and they still offer that um to schools now. And the final report of a school, a long-range school facility master plan includes information and data about the educational program facilities, as well as estimated costs and timelines for any of the proposals, proposed options that they come up with. So we're gonna look into that and, and discuss that, I think, with our long-range ed plan committee.
What were the three options that you moved forward?
Um, that the committee moved forward.
Committee moved forward, yes.
There was, I'd have to look through this, um. Might have to look through it.
Okay, all right.
I think w- you know what, honestly, I don't, I don't know. I can't remember what they, what they initially moved forward with, I can't remember.
Okay.
It changed, though, it changed two or three times before it actually was finalized.
Okay.
So.
So just a question.
Sure.
So I think what you just said was that we're gonna look into N E S D E C right now, to see if N E S D E C would come in and help us put together um the study.
Yeah. Correct.
And help us put together a plan.
Well, well.
And serve as a con- to see about using them in a consultant, to, okay.
Yeah, I, you know, I looked at the original one, and the original one, based on what we're doing in our committee, I kinda feel like we're all just sending ideas and talking about different ideas with each other, where the original one that was made in two thousand was based on a study that, that was, was done, so there was, then you could have those conversations about, about different ideas, and they're based on something, rather than just having an idea.
Well, yeah. Yeah, I think that ninety-seven plan identified all the deficiencies, and then you had something to, to work till it's solving.
Right.
Yeah, I think it's a great idea.
So no, see, if you don't have a map, you can't get there.
Yeah. So I think, and I think we've been trying to create a map, and trying to, to identify different deficiencies, but I, I'm not sure that we know what we're looking for.
Yeah, we're, we're only digging so deep on the surface, too, we're not getting underneath anything, too, but this, this study will probably do.
Yeah. Right. And the study was done twenty years ago, it's probably about time.
Right.
Right.
Probably do.
Hmm.
It's a good thing.
Can I go back and ask a question about math?
Sure.
With the eighth grade math that they're using right now, is, is that the Glencoe?
Yes.
So is part of the work that you'll be doing looking at um the new, whatever the state's coming out with, for this new middle school standard or model that they're looking at, and then comparing to see how our current materials match up with that?
Yeah. Exactly. Exactly, cause it, um, especially at the seventh grade, it's the, the seventh grade, where you have to pull some of those eighth grade standards in.
Right. Mm-hmm.
To, in order to be on that correct path.
Okay.
So I, I believe they call that the accelerated, I don't know if it's pre-algebra, they call it accelerated, I think, at seventh grade.
Okay.
So those groups.
Do you know how new our current math materials are at Stacy?
We just, yeah, we just got them.
They're, 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 yeah, okay.
Yeah. So hopefully, uh, hopefully they're aligned.
All right, thank you.
Any other discussion?
Welcome.
Any more sir?
Okay.
All right, the next agenda item is the report of the Assistant Superintendent for Business and Human Resources. Obviously, Mrs. Perry is not with us this evening, she's a little under the weather, so Mr. Consigly is gonna.
Get three hats to the way, that's not a Craig.
I know, all right, let's see, make sure I get time.
Are they, are they lending you their paychecks, too? You get to do all three jobs?
Yeah. Okay. First is the approval of warrants, we have four warrants today. First warrant is in the amount of two thousand five hundred and eighty-nine dollars and eleven cents.
Motion from John, second from Scott, all in favor?
Second warrant is in the amount of ten thousand eight hundred and thirty-nine dollars and fifty-six cents.
Motion from Jen, second by Joe Calery, all in favor? Ananamous?
Third, in the amount of two hundred and ninety-seven thousand four hundred and nineteen dollars and thirty-seven cents.
Motion from Joe Calery, second by Jim, all in favor?
And the fourth warrant is in the amount of eight thousand one hundred thirty-eight dollars and ninety-nine cents.
Motion from John, second by Scott, all in favor? Okay. Next is professional development.
Oh, um, hold on one second. Within your packet, uh there is professional development that needs to be voted on, uh it's in the amount of a hundred and ninety-seven dollars.
Yeah, nothing.
Motion from Jen, second by Jimmy LaGore, all in favor?
And there are also personnel updates within your, in your packet.
Was it just for review?
Just for your review.
Do we have gifts this evening, Mr. Chairman?
We have two.
Oh, we do have two gifts, too, also.
We have two.
Do you wanna read those?
Okay, so the first gift, the donor is Ryan and Allison Sullivan, for Family and Community Network gift in the amount of fifty dollars. A motion from Scott, second from Joe Calery, all in favor. The second gift is John and Amy Jo Tessascini, family and community network gift in the amount of twenty five dollars. I have a motion from John, second from Jim Legor, all in favor. And of course, as always, you'll make sure we get letters out on these, please.
We will.
Okay, with that, next agenda item is subcommittee updates, marketing and communications.
We haven't had a meeting.
You have not met, yes. Budget?
Uh, we haven't met since the la- since the last update.
Okay. And policy, we were supposed to meet tonight, but unfortunately with the superintendent out of town, Joe was traveling. Mrs. Perry uh has the flu. We postponed the meeting, so we didn't have a policy meeting, cause it would've been just Jen and I and Craig. Okay, next agenda item is any future agenda items? Does anybody have anything they'd like to add as future agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I have two uh two items, just as a reminder. I've I've brought these up before. Um, just looking for an update.
Yes.
Um, one is I'd requested at the um at a January at our second meeting in January, uh, at the mid-year mark for an update and to invite the at two separate meetings, two separate occasions, um, the Stacy principal as well as the Woodland principal to come in and give us an update on how the transition has gone.
Okay.
Um, a- again, just understanding how the cultures are meshing together, how the students are getting along.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Um, and then also very specifically with regards to year-end activities. Um, as we had mentioned before, we received some feedback that there's some uh longstanding Milford traditions that we're understanding that are are um being adjusted and or uh potentially eliminated.
Yes, and I have.
Uh, just had some questions as well, so.
Yep, yep.
Um, so I'm hoping that that's in a fairly soon coming, so that if for some any reason that we wanna make sure we're asking some questions and then changes need to be made, there's time to respond.
I think to be honest with you, Scott, I'm gonna have that put on the next agenda, because one of those topics that you and I are talking about is
Yep, year end. We wanna make sure. We wanna make sure there's enough to change this. Yep, agreed.
We're gonna need time to work on it. Yeah, okay.
Again, not and not to be cryptic. It's it's the year-end activities that have always gone on at at Middle School East.
No. Right, right. Yeah.
That we wanna make sure there's been some discussion as to whether they stay or whether they not.
Right.
Um, we wanna be able to ask some questions so if we can.
I'll get that on next. I'll get that on the sixteenth.
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay. Any other member?
Um, and I apologize, one last piece. Um, also, I'd asked about just a review for and maybe this is under for Craig.
Yeah.
Um, just with regards to homework. Um, I brought it up in a meeting again, probably the beginning of February. Um, just with regards to, you know, where are we with homework? I know we did a homework forum. Um, I received a number of phone calls previous to that meeting. I've received a number of phone calls subsequent to that meeting, um, from parents just I received one this evening. Um, there's middle I've got specifically a middle school parent uh re- reached out to me. Um, this is the next forty eight hours in a middle schooler's life. Um, they have two tests tomorrow in two different subjects. They have two essays that are due in two other subjects, um, and they had a quiz today. They're they're sitting on hours of homework on top of just the normal day-to-day stuff that comes on as well. Um, I had one parent reach out to me. They're estimating that their student, who's a good student, has always done very well, um, three to five hours a night of homework. Um, that they're sitting on.
Would you like that to be part of, uh, I guess, are you just looking at the middle school in particular?
It's middle school that I've received the most phone calls from. I've heard some from the elementary schools, but it's middle school is but is seems to be the source of where I'm getting a lot of feedback from parents. That seems to be the population.
Would you like Nancy to be a parent?
I was gonna say, we should bring Nancy.
Yeah, Na- if Nancy's coming to the next one, it's, I mean, it it's the the c- the general timeline that I'm getting from parents is three to five hours um for a for a number of students, which is I I would view as being exorbitant. Um, in addition to the other feedback I've re- received from parents, and it's just a question, is that it's grading of homework. Uh, and it's the grading of homework not on completion, but on correctness. My understanding of that the intent behind homework was always that it was to be practice of what they did. Last time I last time I checked, we don't keep score at practice. Um, and it's actually ca- it's actually impacting students' grades. They're going home to practice this stuff. They're spending two to three hours, three to five hours in some cases, and then they're going in and getting grades on.
What grade is that in particular?
This is this is the middle school, so six, seven.
Six, seven, eight.
Okay.
Six, seven, eight.
Well, just by by way of benchmark, I might have a sixth grader and he doesn't have anywhere near five hours of homework, so.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah, so it's.
So is there, you know, just so we leveled the field there, is it?
Yeah, six, seven, six, seven, eighth is where I'm getting the most phone calls from. And it may be it may be consolidated to specific teams.
Is it broken down by cluster? Cause, you know, certainly.
And I'm and I'm not asking that question. It's the parents are calling me and saying, hey, this is what my kid is getting. It may be unique teams.
So I talk about it.
Yeah.
It may be in small pockets, but it's um I I would I would estimate the number of phone calls is
Okay.
uh, the number of phone calls I've received is certainly in the double, well above double digits.
Okay. Any other member on future agenda items? Jen?
We should probably look at the sixteenth, because that's the Citizens for Milford Forum, and at least two of you might need to be at that that night.
Actually, um, we had talked about that earlier. We are, John and I and Joe, and I was gonna reach out to you.
Oh, okay.
We are we're coming to school committee. This is a position that we were elected to.
Okay.
So we're coming to the school committee meeting. I'm
Okay.
and if it's okay with everybody, I'm gonna actually write a letter to the citizens group and ask them if they would read it for us.
Okay.
You know, if everybody's okay with that. So.
Yeah, I mean, it impacts both of you a little more than it does us, so I just wanna make sure that we're all comfortable with the order.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right. Yeah, no, if I can if I can speak to that, when when they reached out to me to invite me to the forum, I told them that initially we had a a meeting scheduled for tonight. And this is, you know, this is my top priority.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so this is what I was committed to and I I couldn't make their event.
Yeah, so when that was brought to my attention, I reached out to John Seva right away.
Okay. Mm-hmm.
And um, we tried to move it to the ninth.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and at the end of the day, they said because they had most of their material all done and, you know, they there was no way they could move it, so.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Yeah, all right.
Well, I mean, I I'd just like to add, this meeting has been a regularly scheduled meeting since we set our calendar.
But that's what Joe said.
Yeah, it's a year ago.
A year ago. A year ago.
Yeah, so, you know, it's an unfortunate um oversight, I guess, but I mean, this this is what I'm committed to.
We put this a year ago, so. Yeah. Yeah, you as well, you as well.
Well, it as it turns out, I think the next meeting is going to be an important meeting here, given the number of topics that we just talked about, given the fact that some key people weren't at this meeting.
Right. Right. Right.
Policy, we'll need to meet again, budget, there's a lot of things that have to happen between now and March sixteenth, so.
Yeah, and they they can all be import- I mean, they're all important by nature, but who knows what's gonna develop in the next two weeks? Who knows what old business becomes more important, uh, y- you know.
Right.
Right.
For the anger.
Yeah, that's right, that's right.
Yeah.
Okay. Next agenda item, anybody have any old business they'd like to discuss? Okay, there is no executive session this evening, so I would ask for a motion for adjournment from Joe Calery, second from Scott, all in favor. Unanimous. Good night, everybody, and have a nice weekend, and thank you for watching.